I want to call the Murphy Springs City Council regular meeting to call it to order. We're at the airport. It's January 12th. If you will, if you'll bow with me, we'll say the prayer of the flesh. Father, thank you for this chance that we get to come together, for the blessings that you not only gave us in 2021, for the things that we know will come in 2022. Give us wisdom, give us the ability to be able to have discernment. We pray for those that prayers that are spoken and those that are unspoken, that you continue to be with us and you continue to bless us. We love you and we praise you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to bring you all up to date on my illness. I'm pretty ill. I was iller than I thought I was. I've been taking infusions at Vanderbilt once a week, and the infusions go through March. But I took my seventh treatment on Tuesday, and my doctor called me Tuesday night and told me that I'm getting worse. I have a disease that one in 10,000 people get, and it's fatal. So I'm getting worse, and I can tell I'm getting worse. But he would like for me to report to Vanderbilt Hospital on Monday, and they're going to do a procedure where they're going to put a tube down my vein in my neck, and they can't deaden it. And so that's going to be pretty painful. But for five days, they're going to take all of the blood out of my body and filter it and put it back in. They're going to do that same procedure every day. And he said it's pretty painful, but it needs to be done. He's also going to do a spinal tap, and he's going to do a swallowing test because I'm to the point where it's hard for me to swallow even water, and that's an indicator that the disease is advancing. So, you know, I said, "One in 10,000." I said, "Lord, does that mean I'm going to hit the lottery?" What? But it's very rare, and I'm upset with Blue Cross Blue Shield because they will not approve the medicine that I really need because they said it's not enough research on my disease. And my doctor said, "No, one in 10,000 people get it, so you won't have it." But I just, I'm a fighter. I haven't cried yet. I've come close to it, but, you know, I've lived a good life. I've lived a good life. And I've talked to my family, and I said, "If I don't make it, because this is supposed to be so fatal," you know, I've lived a good life. I, I'm going to fight this. And I told the doctor, I said, "I'm telling this disease, you got the wrong politician." Because the only way I'm going to go down is dying. But I want to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of you for being so good to me through the years and through my illness contacting me and everything. But prayer changes things. It changes things. So I'm going to fight this, and when you pray, your prayers, I'm asking you to call my name. Like my grandmother used to say, "Call my name when you pray." So I'm going to get through this. I'm going to make it. I mean, I just know I'm going to make it. But I just appreciate your prayers, and I just wanted to bring you up to date and pray for me next week. The doctor says it's going to be a pretty painful procedure, taking all the blood out and putting it back in. But I told him, "As long as you put it all back in, we'd be good." But that's all I had to say. And like I said, thank you from the bottom of my heart through the years for being so good to me. If I don't make it, I just want to let you know that life is good. Life is good.
Mayor.
Thank you, Sean.
Could we pray for her right now?
Sure.
Lord, I just thank you for our precious life. It's been in service all over life. Thank you for Madeline, for influence on individuals, but more importantly, dear Lord, how she has represented you to this community, and the sincere love of others, and her desire, dear Lord, to serve you in public service. Lord, we pray for wisdom in the doctors. We pray for strength of body and mind and spirit for Madeline as she goes through this Lord, let the doctors and the healthcare professionals know exactly what to do. And, Lord, we pray for success in the treatment that she's going through. Lord, we thank you for her love for the community. And, Lord, what a great testimony to the love she has for you. May we be inspired as we walk this journey with her. Call to remember to say thank you to those that have served and are presently serving. Pray your presence, that your Holy Spirit would guide and direct Madeline in the coming days. And I just thank you so much for her friendship, for her example, and for what she has meant to our community, her and her family, what a precious legacy they have given us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Madeline, we love you, and we'll be praying for you. The last thing we want you to worry about is anything that has to do with city stuff, so.
Oh, I'll be back soon.
I know you will, but don't, your seat will be sitting here.
Start Monday or Tuesday?
Monday.
I'm putting that on my calendar right now.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda. Anything that, questions on the consent agenda or anything that needs discussion?
If I don't, I move we approve. Consider it.
Motion, a second. Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. I want to make a comment because I know I see Raymond over there, but we have the purchase of rock salt and want to commend the street department, the solid waste department. They were picking up trash on Saturdays where they couldn't pick up trash on Thursdays, but that couldn't have been accomplished if Raymond and his team worked 24/7 on keeping our roads clear. So Raymond, thank y'all for your hard work.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Please let your team know how appreciative we are.
On motion, you have the bond premium proceeds.
Thank you. Council approved $500,000 in this year's CIP for the fire admin, building design, and engineering costs, with the remaining costs expected in the next CIP. We've identified since in a few sources of existing funds that could be allocated to this project so that additional borrowings won't be necessary, and we can keep that project moving on a quicker timeline. One of those funding sources would be from the Rucker Lane Road improvements. We've identified that estate grant, that project will qualify for an unallocated portion of estate grant that we received this year, which will free up a little over $1 million in CIP. And then also from last year's bond issuance, we have about $4.8 million in bond premium proceeds that have not been allocated, along with some contingency funds that can be used to apply to that project. So if council agrees, we can reallocate these funds to the fire admin building and go ahead and get that project moving. I'm happy to answer any questions about the reallocation, and I know Chief Fokes is here too, if you have any questions about the building.
When we went through this, the CIP last year, from a priority standpoint, where was the fire admin building from a priority standpoint on there?
Well, as far as prioritizing to get the engineering started, it was, we did prioritize it enough to go ahead and fund that side of it because we weren't sure how quickly the construction would be done, and because we were trying to keep that borrowing to 50 million, the actual construction costs got pushed to the next CIP. As I've spoken with Mr. Whitaker, he thinks that they can get that project designed quicker, I believe, where we might be able to move faster on that construction timeline, but we need to have the funding in place first. And if we don't borrow until, you know, later in fiscal year '23, that just slows down when we would start that construction, or we would have to do a general fund and reimburse ourselves later from a future bond proceed.
But it was allocated in '22, '23?
Right. So the engineering was in this CIP for FY '22 with construction anticipated in FY '23.
So one of the things that we're looking at, and it's preliminary right now, is to use design build to deliver it. And if we do that, of course, we'd be design and build. It all kind of comes together. And based on the building and some of the preliminary estimates on design needs, it might work well that way, and we'd save substantially on the design costs. But the advantage is you really have to put them all together to gain advantage to that. And that's why advancing these funds and putting it together allows us to use that delivery method, probably saves substantially.
Yeah, that's how we built the airport as well, was on that design bill.
Maybe I'm maybe just dovetailing off of him or just asking the question in a different way. I guess one of the, maybe what he's asking, something that's going through my mind is, you know, did we leapfrog anything that was in the priority that we could be using these same funds for? I guess may be part of what would go, what his question would make me think is, you know, was this, you know, is there something else that we were going to be doing in our CIP this year that we haven't already paid for? Or this is just literally the next thing in line, that we've already got everything borrowed for all of these projects, and that's just the next thing in line? I guess that's.
I understand what you're saying, yeah. So, you know, we haven't actually borrowed yet for the '22 CIP, so most of those projects have not yet started anyway. There are a couple that we have done a reimbursement resolution so that we can go ahead and get projects started before the FY '22 borrowing takes place, which honestly, I anticipate that happening over the next few weeks, you know, touching base with our, with company on securities with our financial advisor and seeing how the market looks. But because that project, the construction was listed in the FY '23 CIP, which would be coming to y'all next year or later this fall, I don't see that as, you know, I don't think we're leapfrogging or jumping over another project. Now, I'm, you know, we can pull up the CIP if y'all would like and just see what was approved in the '22.
I guess I, I guess I'll just sort of, I'm, maybe what he's asking, what I kind of, I can't remember all that stuff. And so I'm just kind of trying to think if there are a list of things that we're getting ready to go borrow money for, and now we have these funds that we're using to push one of these projects up.
It would not slow down any of the projects that are borrowed for and that we've got in the FY '22. But once we borrow, well, you know, those funds will be there too. We had, we, that bond premium, we had allocated some of those proceeds already last year to some equipment needs for street department and recreation. But just kind of holding on to it to see if anything else, that gave us that opportunity. And then that along with that state grant that we, that we received where we can use that for road improvements, allowed us to look at that from a different perspective to say, "Hey, between those two items, we've pretty, pretty well almost got this covered now if we want to go ahead and just move forward with it."
So it's, no prioritization hasn't changed, and the project set, it's really the source of funds that have changed. So, you know, we'll use, instead of borrowing for the building, we'll use bond premiums. And so on another project where we use bond premiums, we'd shift over to being funded from.
I guess the point, the point is something's getting moved up, though, because we have these bond, these bond premiums, something on the list of projects that we have is going to get moved up.
Right.
I guess maybe a better question would be, "Why did you choose that particular project?" You know, for example, if there's a road project that we need to do, yes, it's going to get done next year. Is there a reason why this was plugged into that, we're going to move this project up? I get, you know, this is a question I just need to know the answer to. It's not that I'm.
Right.
I'm not questioning the decision that much, but it's something I feel like I should know the answer to.
Yeah. I mean, road, well, it wouldn't be road, road projects because of the funding is a little, any amount of funds that would go into it, so it would be substantially more than this. But also for potential economic development of the area and having, having a place for department to go to. We're looking at temporary measures as it is now, just to get us through the construction, but then to have something move, something where they can move to permanently is, is really why we're looking at this pretty hard to do it right now.
Okay. So part of that is just freeing the site?
Freeing the site up, yeah. Yeah. Same thing for the water, water resources to building. Yeah.
And is all of this, it has to go in something with the CIP, right?
To be funded, long-term funds. So, yeah, it would match the, either the CIP or a previous CIP we've already borrowed on, and we have bond premium funds that are sitting there, so.
I guess I was asking, could some of that money be taken out and used for something that's not in the CIP? And that cannot happen, right?
Oh, no, the money's limited.
To CIP-type projects.
CIT, yeah, capital-type projects. There's a broad scope of those, but it would be capital project. It wouldn't be operating funds. We couldn't.
Yeah, I have some ideas, but I'll bring that up in the budget.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Any questions? I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
I'm staying.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We'll move to property acquisition appraisal services for redevelopment project, and this is Town Creek Phase Two. Sam.
Mayor, I'd like to know the members of council. The city administration brings a proposal today to you for appraisal services for Town Creek Phase Two. Town Creek Phase Two, or Town Creek, daylighting in general was a significant element of the Bottoms redevelopment plan and something that, a project that the city could and should take on to help enhance the economic development potential of the area. Town Creek Phase One is from Murphy Springs to Church Street. That's in the design and permitting process. We've looked across the street at Town Creek Phase Two, which will go from Church Street to Front Street or to the front door of Cannonsburg, to give you a landmark there. This project is eligible for funding through the stimulus funds through the ARPA, which is the American Rescue.
Rescue Plan.
Rescue Plan Act, or COVID stimulus money qualifies for that. So we've got a proposal for you today for three professional services, one from an appraiser, Robbie Kitchen, one from a review appraiser, Rhett Turner, and then also with Volkert and Associates to help us with negotiation and acquisition of the properties. This does need to follow the federal acquisition process because it will involve federal grant funds, and so we bring that to you, recommend your approval of the contracts. Funding's anticipated to be reimbursed, we'll seek reimbursement through the grant funding through the stimulus act. I'll be glad answering questions. Mr. Ives, also in the audience, and could provide specific information if you have questions about the appraisal process or the appraisers.
Sam, I'm going off memory, you know, because it's been a long time ago that we first kind of heard about the daylighting idea and talked about it and, you know, whatever, but we were talking about it or whatever brought that up. Is there also, was there also a component of this that was related to the underground structures kind of aging and that, you know, some of that going under the road was creating some issues? And so does it, are we alleviating some of that future worry with this, this also?
Yes, Mr. Lulance, the aging infrastructure was a thing that got us looking at Town Creek Box Culvert. It was installed in the, in the mid-'50s to mid-'60s using concrete and corrugated metals, and those do have an active design life. Some of the components in Phase One have already shown concerns for failure. Phase Two was a little more stable, and so we knew that it would be probably more driven by land use and land development and redevelopment, but it's also an opportunity for us to deal with 75-year-old infrastructure that's in the ground. And this is a more resilient system to daylight that creek where we're not having to replace a box culvert or prepare for that in the future. So the aging infrastructure issue is also dealt with here.
I move for approval. Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to approval of council meeting minutes, December 2nd, December 8th, and December 16th. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
If there aren't any, we'll move for approval.
Second.
A second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. We have approved, we need to look at approving budget amendments from the city manager.
Craig.
These are actually items that usually fall under consent. They just are listed on motion this time by mistake, but these are routine amendments that Craig, under his authority, just moves from department to another as needed.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll look at approving expenses for on-call plans, on-call plans review services by Griggs and Maloney. Matthew.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of council, filling in for Mr. McKnight on this one. For a while now, we've been contracting out with Griggs and Maloney to provide us with on-call plans review services as we've been short of project engineer. We were able to fill that project engineer position in 2021, but that employee left around Thanksgiving, so we are needing to continue, to continue to bridge that staffing gap with Griggs and Maloney assisting us with plans review. And we would ask that you, that you allocate additional funds in the amount listed on the council communication. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And as I mentioned, that's due to the staffing, staffing shortage that we are experiencing right now.
I'm going to second a bit. Just with a, with a note, a sidebar to say, let's knock this out come budget time. Let's go, let's try to get the staffing stuff best we can and add where we can, et cetera, et cetera, and be proactive on that if we can, be my sidebar second.
Motion, a second. Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. So, Aaron, you need to fix that before.
I caught that, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Talking to HR. Randolph, that means you too.
Planning.
Planning.
Engineer.
Throw everybody in.
Let's get it knocked out.
Y'all, if y'all could also try to fix why they can't find employees at Andy's Custer next door. It's taking a lot longer to get our triple chocolate concrete.
I'll consider that other duties as assigned.
Girl would greatly appreciate that. All right, planning commission recommendations for rescheduling public hearings.
Yes, sir. We had four public hearings that were supposed to be conducted last Thursday. As you all know, we had to cancel our council meeting last week due to inclement weather, so we need to try to get these scheduled as soon as possible. There are two dates. The soonest that we could do it would be on February the 3rd and still meet our advertising requirements in the zoning ordinance for, for public hearings. Another option would be February the 17th. So obviously, we would like to get them rescheduled as soon as possible. And if February the 3rd works for council, that would work for us. We can get done, we need to get done to get those on the agenda, but February the 17th would be a backup date.
Yeah, hold on just a minute. Let me, I'm going to be gone the 3rd, but I don't know if there's.
You going hunting?
Fishing. I'm out the 17th.
All means we should make it the 3rd, dude.
These were pretty straightforward, I believe, weren't they, John?
Yeah, they were.
Station in a zoning on New Salem Highway, might have been one or two folks that spoke at the public hearing. And an annexation and zoning on Florence Road, probably three, four people spoke at the public hearings, but.
That's the one that the road's going through.
That's correct. That's correct.
So.
February 3rd.
3rd.
February 3rd.
Yeah. I'm not worried about it all, and they're planning commission anyways. We might get out.
All right, we have a motion, a second.
Sean, you have a second.
Yeah, I got a second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
I'm staying.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have ordinance 21043. This is a budget amendment. This is second and final reading.
No changes have been made, so.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Motion, a second.
Vice Mayor Skiles Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Lulance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to our workshop items. We have the 2021 sanitary sewer allocation report.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to talk about sewer with you this afternoon. So this, this is a, our second annual sewer allocation report that covers calendar year 2021. This is a requirement of the sanitary sewer allocation ordinance that was enacted in December of 2019. So now this, we've got two years under our belt. We can do a little bit of comparisons between years, and hopefully, as I've, as I shared with planning commission and some others, we will, we, we're getting more sophisticated on this report as we go forward, and it's really, it's affording me some insights, and I hope, I hope it is with planning as well. So just a quick reminder, the assets, you know, we, we call this inside the fence. This is our water resource recovery facility, the bucket, if you will. And then we have the assets outside the fence, pump stations, pipes and manholes, and those are the, you know, what delivers the sewage into the bucket. Again, kind of, we have a separate sewer system, meaning the storm sewer system is separate from our sanitary sewer system. That's a good thing. We have pipes that are expandable and very expensive to expand. We've got a treatment plant that is expandable, and it's expand, it's, it's very expensive. The one thing that is not expandable is the West Fork Stones River, and that's the, what assimilates our treated effluent. We have a very high-quality effluent, very high-quality treatment process, but TDAC does limit us on what we can put into, some would call the creek. Again, we model around our wet weather loading. This is just kind of a graph that shows time on the x-axis and flow rate on the y-axis, and you can kind of see in the summer months where our average resides, and then you can see in the winter months where our average resides. In 2020, that was about a 2.8 multiplier, and it equated to about 500 gallons per day per connection. The good news is, in 2021, it's only about 2.3 times and about 420 gallons per day per connection. So you're going to see a large increase in our capacity connections because we freed That frees up space for sewer, actual discharging of sewer from connections. And a connection, it's an apartment, townhome, single-family home, commercial establishment, food service establishment, or retail shop. So it's a pretty broad definition of a connection. So we currently have about 76,585. Almost 51,000 of those are residential or other connections, and about, almost, you know, 25,500 or 25,600 apartment connections. So about a third versus two-thirds others. So the sewer rehab is paying off. This is just a chart I went, I threw here in the last minute, but this shows the million gallons of day that gets to our plant per inch of rain. And on the x-axis, you can see from 2014 to 2021 how that has been decreasing. You know, we just bid a $4.7 million rehabilitation project last July, and so we still, we've done that about every 18 months, about every year and a half, we get a pretty big rehab project started. And so this is kind of the fruit of that labor. We want that number to keep going down. So 2020 versus 2021, I think this number's a little low, but this is what the math said. We had 1,617 new connections, only about 2.2% increase. We did show a 59%, and I'll go into this a little bit more. We showed about a 28,000 increase in available connections on our as-is condition. That's up 59%. Like I said, there's a little bit of a skew, skewing factor in there that I'll discuss later. So again, though, this is still a big win. I mean, the news is very positive. Our available connections from the 2B condition with our improvements, we show about a 33,000 new connections that are available. That's up 50% from last year. And we did account for committed connections. That went up quite a bit from the 8,300 to about the 12,400, but I did include the 3,700 that we talked about on the Salem Highway corridor. And there was about a 300 apartment, apartment increase on that number. Remember, we have to go through one of three pump stations. We've got the main pump station at the Werf, we've got overall creek, and we've got the Southwest Regional. That's kind of the system as is. This is where the skew came in a little bit. In 2020, and this is monitoring basin 6A, I don't, let me see if I can bring up a little, can I bring up the laser? I can't read all the way out there, screen. Laser, yeah. So 6A is right in here. It's around the old Fort Park area. It's where the new Southwest Pump Station. We went from 15, or 3,020 to 2020 to almost 16,021. So that's where that, a large part of that increase of the 28,000, 12,700 of those are in this one base. So that's where I say it's a little bit, you gotta look, you just gotta get into the data and notice those kind of things. So that's where that 412% increase, I've highlighted that, and I highlighted in your, in your packet. So this shows the 59% increase, but if you take out 6A, it changes it to more about a 32% increase versus a 58, or 59. And this kind of shows you the delta between 20 and 2021. The 2B condition, that's where we're talking about a Northeast Regional Pump Station. This is the 2021 as-is, and you can kind of see, again, the red is not so good, the yellow is, is okay, light green is good, and the dark green is really good. I'm going to flip to the 2B condition where this is about a $50 million worth of improvements to do this, but you can kind of just see the color changes there. A lot of, a lot of green, a lot of darker green, right? So you can just kind of see the difference, and you can kind of see that Northeast Regional up there. Okay, this is kind of where the improvements would go, the 50 million or 47 and a half. Eight and a half million of that is the Salem Sewer that we talked about recently, that we, it's an estimate, but we're moving forward with that design. And the other is the Northeast Regional, 20.5 million. Now, I'll say this, and I had a meeting last week with the design engineer, that number is more than likely going to drastically increase, so much so that we really are going to be looking at cost benefit. And if the capacity gained for that area that it serves and the stress it relieves on other pump stations and assets, it may, at this point, we're going to have to go back and sharpen the pencil and go back and look and see, look at alternate options, I think. That number has gotten large enough that I think we may be looking at rehabbing some old, some other pump stations and rehabbing some of the sinking creek sewer interceptor. I'm just saying that I've cooled off to the Northeast Regional Pump Station based on the numbers that are coming back right now. I just don't know if that juice is worth the squeeze, and we'll have more details for you with that as we get deeper into it. But this is just kind of a prelude to, to a more, maybe deeper conversation, kind of like we did with, with monitoring basin 11, the Salem Highway corridor. We had to dig in and get more granular in that basin. I think we're going to have to do the same thing with the Northeast Regional. So I know that's exciting to think about. Real quick, again, these are the total connections committed. These are not, not connected to the sewer, but they have been approved on paper, so we've booked them effectively. 12,375, again, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of an increase, or somewhat of a substantial increase from last year because we did account for those 3,700 new connections in the Salem Highway sewer upgrades. But you can see that 72% of the total there, it is MF 11, and basins 13A and 13, which is the overall creek. So the bulk of those committed connections are west of the interstate in the high-growth Summary, we're in really good shape. On our rehab program is paying off in a big way. We have approximately 49% remaining capacity. That's 76,200 remaining connections. We have 76,585. That's compared to 39% last year. Again, we have 8,600 connections committed and 3,700 new connections accounted for in the Salem Highway sewer upgrades. Investing approximately 50 million can increase that sewer connections by about 23,520, taking that total up to 99,000, almost 100,000 new connections. So we do have the ability at the Werf to handle the hydraulic flows. There are going to be some wet weather flow upgrades that need to happen there. Again, that number may change too. We've got it at about, I think around 6 million. And there are still several areas where sewer connections will be constricted. Like I said, as we get more and more granular into the basins, there may be pinch points that we identify. And again, a lot of the sewer connection capacity is centralized to the city and doesn't necessarily support extending sewer into the city's urban growth boundary. The takeaways, we do have the overall creek pump station upgrade as a priority. That's expected to be bid this spring. I know we're actively acquiring easements for that project. That's going to give us probably our biggest capacity increase on the west side of the high-growth area, so that's a, that's a big project. We are monitoring the County Farm Pump Station. Northeast Regional Pump Station is being reviewed for cost benefit, as I just mentioned, in gain capacity and deferred costs versus other options. More to come on that. Capacity upgrades at the Werf are critical. We're continuing to work with TDEC on our NPDS permit to increase or the capacity or expand the water resource recovery facility. Those talks are getting more litigious, might be a good word, to be quite honest. And again, as we get this, as we do this annual report, more refined each year, we're going to, we're going to be seeing trends and being able to give us more insight. I think this is one of those tools that recently, as I've been looking at it, it's one of those things like, wow, this is something, you know, you didn't know you didn't know. And when you, when you, once you start seeing some of the highlights and how you're dealing with I&amp;I and some of the capacity regained and where you're, where you're gaining it, it's, it's going, I think, to become a very vital tool in how we approve sewer connections in the future. And I know we're still tying this over into the future land use map, and that's still being worked on. So that's really about it. It's good news, but if y'all have any connections, questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I've got one, Darren.
Yes, sir.
In discussions with TDEC about expanding the permit, what are, what are we hearing as the obstacle to doing that? Has it changed? Is the messaging the same?
So the dissolved oxygen standard is a big problem.
You're about to see Darren's face get really red here in a second, Ronnie.
I will start this conversation off. I went to, I went to Tennessee Tower yesterday and was one of two attendees to the impaired waters, the draft 2022 impaired and threatened waters list for the state. And I was the only one in the state of Tennessee that made a public comment on the impaired waters list yesterday. And I let TDEC know, I didn't go into detail technical, I had five minutes. I thought I only had three, so I probably spent less than five. But I told them that their consistency and transparency was bad. I really, it's, it's moving goalposts constantly here that now they may be talking about Percy Priest Lake, how we impact that, and this watershed study for the Stones River. They've just redone, as I found out two days ago, they redid their standard operating procedure on how to count the bugs in the river. They passed, they enacted that December 28th of 2021 without letting anyone know. This is their third SOP revision in nine years. They added comments to historical bioassessments that we've provided since 2014 in the last year. They've gone back and reinterpreted some of our results without letting us know, and had some very specious comments that I don't think they can justify. So I was a little miffed, to be, to be honest. They need to let us know when they make new comments, they need to know when they change the, let us know when they change the rules, and they need to let us know when they change the goalposts, and they're not doing any of that. So the talks are not going very well because I don't think they're communicating very well, even though I'm kind of asking them to do better. So we, we have got King and Spalding, the gentleman that helped us with, she's with the Corps of Engineer in Percy Priest Lake, they're, they're going to be joining me at our next meeting to talk with TDEC, and they're going to be used as a resource and a problem-solving group at this point in time. I don't know if that was, if I should be, you know, these guys, these guys are good. I mean, they, they really do come to the table and try to help solve problems and chart new paths forward. So I'm hoping that by bringing them with me at the next meeting, that does heighten the focus and the communication skills TDEC. Long-winded answer, man, I know.
When you talk about our capacity, you know that you have 75,000 more connection capacity. Is that what our plan can handle?
Yes.
Or does that also associate what you think we can put back into the river without wearing the TDEC deal, or what?
The reason that number went up, I don't want to get too, I can get, I'll be happy to sit down with you and go through the math. We took so much water out, so the number, we had a 33% reduction in a per-connection usage.
Okay. How does that just happen?
Well, we've taken all the water out. We had the same amount of rainfall in 2020 as we had in 2021, so rainfall the same. We had 33% less rainwater get into the system. Remember the.
How does that just happen?
Well, we spend $5 million every 18 months on rehab projects.
Improving the lines?
Stop, we, we, we fix leaks. We line pipes, we, we spray the interior of manholes.
Get some from that, that, yeah, 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 okay.
Keeps groundwater and rainwater from getting into sewer system, so basically, we are plugging leaks.
Yeah.
The rehab program is a, is a fancy way of saying we go plug leaks in the sewer system.
Yeah, I remember now, okay.
So, so the actual volume of water going through the pipes is less because we've got less rainwater getting in there. That actually diminishes the amount of per-connection per day. So now you've got increased capacity, and you're dividing it by a smaller number. So your, so your connections go, jump up big. I mean, I can show you the math. It, it really is real. So we've, we've regained capacity through those fixing the leaks.
But that doesn't, there's not a, that wouldn't be a very good way to use that. There's not, there's no limitation on the release into the river.
Right. We have not increased our ability, what we're releasing in the river. We've regained it in the collection system.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, good question.
Do you need any help from our local delegation when you're meeting with TDEC?
I haven't gone there yet. So we're, we're going to bring in King and Spalding first and have some discussions, and then, the great thing about this, y'all, is we're not up against the wall. We've got 10 years to work through, and I don't want to, I want to keep the pressure on, right? I don't want to wait until year 10 to get it solved. We want to get it solved sooner rather than later. But the good news, and even TDEC has appreciated the fact that we are pressing this issue so soon so that we don't have, we're not critical mass, so to speak, when we really, really need it. We've got some time to work through this. And so the next step, I think, is, I've worked, you know, six years trying to work it out staff to staff. We've raised it to the deputy commissioners level, bringing in King and Spalding, and when we get more hard-pressed, I do think that the state legislature is a route we need to go, potentially. So we'll, we'll keep you apprised in how we escalate conversations.
Okay, any more questions?
Oh, you're good. No, no.
Any questions, any more questions for Darren?
Great. Thank you all very much.
All right, we'll move to fiscal year '22. This is our mid-year budget review.
Okay, I'll try and help me get this, I think it's coming. All right. Okay, well, thank you. Today, we're just going to go over the highlights of the mid-year budget review report that was in your packet. And this is just a snapshot as of December 31, so y'all just are getting a good high-level look of the first six months of the year. So we'll start with revenues and our major taxes. The chart here shows property tax and our sales taxes, and shows how we compare this year to last year at this time. Property taxes make up 32% of our general fund revenues, and this year, we increased 4% over last year, whereas we budgeted about a 3% increase. We're also, through December, right on target with our collections. Local sales tax makes up about 29% of revenues, and we're up nearly 20% as compared to last year. On top of that, we're ahead of budget by almost 4.7 million. So just for point of reference, this time last year, we were, our sales tax collections were up 9% from the previous December. So we recognize that this growth is certainly unprecedented, and we will keep an eye for any dips or significant changes through the year. Sales tax makes up 6% of our revenues, and through December, we're seeing a 33% increase or close to 1.8 million over last year, and we're over budget by a little over a million and a half. So this next chart shows other local taxes, which makes up 9% of revenues and includes business license, beer and liquor franchise, and our in lieu of taxes. Last year's other local taxes here, sorry, a little delay there, that yellow column there, that's a little misleading because the state allowed a business license tax extension from FY '20 that we recognized in FY '21. When you take out that extension, we're really about 3% over this year with those other local taxes. And while not a major revenue source, hotel motel taxes can be indicative of other economic factors. And the pandemic, as y'all know, really affected this industry, but we've seen a really significant rebound since then, and we're back above pre-pandemic levels at this point. So we budgeted just a slight increase this year, but are recognizing almost an 80% jump instead. And we did. And we do expect that trend to continue for the remainder of the year. And our other state taxes have stayed relatively flat, showing just a moderate 5% increase over last year. Okay, so here's a look at charges for services citywide. Overall, we're showing a growth this year for this category. Last year, parks revenues took a big hit because of COVID as compared to FY '20, where we were down nearly 80% at this time of year. This year, we've seen a really great rebound there and are showing closer to an 82% increase over last year. Golf is down slightly, just about 5%, but we really think that's just kind of a natural decrease as more activities opened up for people to have more options. And they're still showing about 17% over FY '20's golf revenues. And solid waste charges are at about 4%. And most other departments are showing flat results as compared to last year. Here's a look at our other revenues. Again, intergovernmental looks really skewed compared to this year compared to last year. But keep in mind, we had the CARES Act funding last year, and our state direct allocation grant last year was about double what we got this year. And for true comparison purposes, we are not including the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we've received so far since those have not yet been allocated.
And you're kind of, because we, because there were a lot of newspaper articles written about this. I got a talk to Nate the other day on the slide before that parks and rec revenues. It's just something I think we should all understand, though. He told me the other day that the soccer complex revenues, we had already exceeded our full year budget on those rentals, on the field rentals, you know, the turf field rentals when that rehab we did out there. We already exceeded for the entire year of.
Just for the first six months.
What we budgeted for. So just, that's something we all took, took a lot of questions on. And I think that's pretty astounding, frankly. So anyway, that's only with, that's not even with all the fields even being open.
Not even done, right.
Just everybody all know, it's going along a pretty good path.
And the type of activities that have been out there add to our hotel motel revenues because they have been tournaments that have brought people in from the out.
So I thought that was an interesting point we all ought to kind of have in our, you know, career.
Absolutely. Okay, let's see, where was I? Licenses and permits are up 21%. And then fines and penalties are showing about an 18% drop. And that's where the Safe Street Camera Program was discontinued. And then again, other revenues look a little skewed here as compared to last year. But that's where we had land sale revenues last year, and we did not have any this year. So before I go into expenses, are there any questions on the revenue side? Okay, so salaries and benefits make up 45% of our budgeted expenses. Through December, we're up 9% compared to last year. But if you take out the one-time stipends that we paid out in August, we're really up more like 5% over last year. And we're running under budget by about 3.5% due to vacancies, which we will work on this budget year. At 18% of budget, the annual debt service transfer is our second highest expense category. And our overall budget this year is really flat compared to last year with about a 1.5% increase. The transfers through December are skewed right now. And that's really because of timing differences of when principal and interest payments are due based off of the, where we refunded several of our debt issuances. So most of our principal is due now in May and June versus earlier in the fiscal year. And then moving to schools. Since there was no change to the schools transfer this year, this amount's flat through December and will be for the rest of the year as well. On other expenses, as, you know, with not having a hiring or spending freeze, we expected to see an increase in operating expenses really across the board through December. And we are seeing that here. Repairs and maintenance expenses are up this year. And that's mainly due to state street aid paving repairs that were done earlier in the year this year as compared to FY '21. The all other expense category includes a lot of one-time spending projects. Last year, the, it was a bit higher where we purchased the Costco property for about 2.4 million. This year, we do have property purchases for economic development as well, but it was closer to about $700,000 for that Church Street property. So when you take out the debt service timing difference for that transfer and those one-time spending items, normal general fund operating expenses are up by 4 million for the year or about 6%. Are there any questions on expenses? And just as a reminder, to keep our borrowings, our future borrowings lower, we had several projects that were funded out of fund balance this year. So we moved the police cars and the new skate park and some airport improvements, all to come from fund balance. I'm sorry?
We didn't spend, I'm sorry, from fund balance, we didn't.
We haven't spent that, but we have budgeted.
Some skate park, a lot of grant, a lot of 800.
I'll have to go back and double check that because.
I think that 3 billion was for West Park.
Oh, that may, yeah, I think it's combined, you're right. It's for Skate Park and West Park, you're right, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's exactly right. I think that's the two projects combined, so. And then we had about 5.5 million carried over from last year. So with a lot of supply chain issues, I do expect a lot of those items from FY '21 to probably carry over FY '23 as well, where things are being ordered but just aren't coming in yet as well. All right, so just to recap, our tax revenues are exceeding budget, and most of our other revenues are meeting or slightly exceeding budget as well. And we'll continue to monitor those revenue streams. Our normal expenses are running under budget, especially with regards to salaries and benefits due to our vacancies. And staff continues to manage expenses and prioritize projects based on our changing community needs and council priorities. I know that was a lot of data to throw at you. And glad to see everybody was paying attention with the skate park area there, thank you. I hope this was helpful and.
Through that, and make sure.
Yeah, and make sure we're all awake. I do think it's helpful to see, though, where we've been and how things are looking as we prepare for next year's budget. We'll be starting those talks in the next few weeks.
Where are we on our pay, I don't want to say it's a pay study, but pay.
Yeah, salary survey. Yeah, we've got the data, and we're taking a look at it right now. And so we should have that over. Might be February workshop where we talk about it. But we've secured the data now, just this week.
All right, we'll move, we'll move to any questions on the dashboard information that Aaron's providing. All right, seeing none, you have a beer permit in front of you, a couple of beer permits.
There's a new location for a restaurant at 1950 South Church Street and an ownership change for a grocery market at 275 West Office Pike, Number A. Both applicants have met requirements for a beer permit, and staff recommends approval pending final building and codes inspections.
Any questions?
There aren't any for approval.
Mr. LaLance?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet?
Hi.
Mr. Wade?
Hi.
Mr. Wright?
Hi.
Mayor McFarland?
Hi, looks like we have two statements to be paid.
We have two payables to the Rutherford County Circuit Clerk. One's for $30,039, and the other's for $8,773. Both will be paid out of the 2019 CIP contingency line.
motion second, Ms. Brown.
Vice Mayor Skelteers?
Hi.
Mr. LaLance?
Hi.
Mr. Martin?
Hi.
Mr. Shacklet?
Hi.
Mr. Wade?
Hi.
Mr. Wright?
Hi.
Mayor McFarland?
Can we have the business from staff?
I know we were a little heavy on action items today with our conference meeting. We need to shift some things into this one. The 20th, we're set for a meeting in this room at four o'clock.
Four to six, yeah.
Four to six. The topic, special meeting, so we're reserved, we're limited just to the topic that we put on there. And that's a discussion with, about MTSU and the city's relationship and the issues surrounding that.
If y'all are okay with that, I mean, y'all got an email that we were forwarded. But I mean, we might as well, since we had already advertised to the council. If y'all are okay just sitting and discussing among council members on maybe what we can talk about on those four or five different topics. And then we can send that information to the, to MTSU as a council on what, you know, our overall discussion, discussion is.
We have sent an invitation to the Board of Trustees to attend, and their secretary said that they weren't interested in doing that.
Do you think our relationship with MTSU is really getting bad? They just don't, what do you think the problem is?
I think that there are some issues. I wouldn't characterize it as the whole relationship is bad. I think there's a lot of positives. I think we're working through some issues. We met yesterday, Chad and I, with the MTSU representatives at the airport, the operational folks. And I think we're, we had a very good meeting, a very positive meeting. We want to make sure the administration supports that. I sent an email today asking them to do that, to support what the operational people have put into place, which has made a big difference here at the airport. But I think that there are some larger issues. Airport's not the only one that we have on the agenda. And there's some opportunities that we want to talk about. For example, economic development was one that we had talked about. And we'd like to, as a council, as trustees. We're trustees, and since we can only do that in a group setting, that's why we set aside this time to do that.
I just think a university, as vibrant as they are in a city, you know, I just hate to see that because we'll never come together if we don't sit down and come together. And I just, you know, I'm not objecting to us talking about these issues without them, but I just don't really see the purpose. Then none of them are going to be represented. But, you know, if they don't want to come, we can't make them.
Do we, what are we on our time as far as advertising for that meeting? I mean, if, I don't want to change the fact that we, I mean, personally, if that's going to be our.
Only opportunity to try to get a cohesive message across to them. You know, if we try to send a letter, it's going to be impossible for all of us to, for that letter to say exactly what all of us want to say specifically. But, you know, for us to sit here and talk and get some good general ideas together about, hey, here's some things that we think will improve the community, the city, and how we think it'll impact, you know, what we deal with every day. You know, I'm all for that. Are we too late to advertise if there's something else that we want to talk about in that meeting, by the way?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can put other things in.
I mean, we, the meeting was advertised as a general discussion. Somebody really could bring up any, any topic, so.
Regarding that, well, that, you'd be limited to that topic. But any issue under that topic, you can add to that. I mean, it wasn't advertised with a specific agenda. It was basically just relationships and.
Bring up anything.
We have, or MTSU. But if you had something outside of that bounds, we have time to redo the agenda to add that to it. This was going to be a building ask in lieu of the council meeting. So we'd meet four to six, and then we wouldn't have a council that night. Our next council meeting would be on the 20th.
I read their response when they said they were not interested. I just wonder, do we ask, or do we even care to ask what their reason is? I mean, you know what I'm saying? You don't want to meet with me, okay, why? I mean, just, I think it's out of respect that we at least, this is just my opinion. Because here again, when you have a city as vibrant as we are and a university that's a goldmine in a city, and we can't even sit at a table and talk about issues or talk about anything. So I just wonder, could we at least ask the question, why don't you want to meet?
Remember, Wright, the only thing the email said was that procedurally that they didn't have the ability to do that. And I don't, I don't understand that. I don't know their procedures, though, but.
I just, I just see this going down a even deeper break off of a relationship. And that, that to me is very terrible. A university and a city can't sit down and talk. It bothers me, really.
You know, in the response that we got, it was because I think their thought was that the two convening boards coming together and meeting, just a thought, and this may be, I don't know, but. What about inviting just to come and, 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 okay, if you won't want our boards to meet together, to at least have a representative from the university, that he's, they're saying they're going to work through their staff, I think is what the letter also said. We would like to be able to have this dialogue, this document. Would that not allow some of the same communication to begin? Because, I mean, we could sit here and talk about issues, you know, but if you don't have the people at the table, you know, maybe just ask, okay, if you don't want to meet the Board of Trustees, could we just ask Dr. McPhee to come and listen to some of our dialogue, listen to some of our concerns? And, you know, and that's a public meeting. So the trustee board wants to hear that interchange, then at least we would have put something on the table.
I'm not opposed to having Dr. McPhee here, but I'm sure they've got my mic turned way up, so.
Hard to hear.
Off, it really doesn't help the volume. You know, I'm not opposed to having him here. They're going to be able to listen to what we say. I would tell you frankly, you know, I was looking forward to having a different set of ears. Because I've run into just a brick wall with conversations I'm having with Dr. McPhee. They've just not been fruitful, they've not gone anywhere. And the whole, you know, the conversations about the airport, it was great one day and completely the opposite the next. I mean, so, I mean, for me, it's fine if he, you know, if he wants to be here, if he wants to be a participant, I'm okay with it. But if the board's not going to be here, we're going to still run into the situation where, you know, we all still have to be able to have some collective voice. And so the way I kind of visioned or visualized when I got the response back from it, I was disappointed. But what I thought maybe we do is at least that gives us an opportunity to talk through some of these things, kind of go, all right, look, y'all remember when we were in the retreat? Everybody was here and said, you weren't here yet for the one out on.
College Grove.
Franklin, yeah, or, yeah, College Grove. And, you know, we had, MTSU kept coming up, coming up then, you know? I mean, if you remember, there were just all these different, under economic development, under impact on crime, under the, you know, that kind of kept coming up. And so I think maybe we just use this to have an opportunity for us to talk through, hey, look, what do we think would be some of the things that we think would improve, you know, the quality of life for our citizens? If that has to do with the airport or housing around the campus or, you know, whatever, those kinds of things, economic development stuff, that maybe we, gives us an opportunity to have us have a, you know, a somewhat cohesive message kind of from the council. Kind of say, hey, look, here are some things that we think would be good for the university to work on. You know, it's a strange situation. I'm a citizen, and so I impacted that way. I'm an alumnus. I impacted that way. You know, my family worked there for 40 years. And so I'm, you know, I have terribly deep roots. And then I'm a city council person. So I have to deal with how, what they decide to do impacts everybody in the city. And so it's a, you know, there's a lot of threads in this thing. And so just at least from the city council perspective, that if we can come up with a somewhat, you know, here are some things that we think would be helpful, instead of trying to fight every one of these things. And here's the problem, if I, this is just the reason why we all have to meet like this, to come up with things and vote on them. Because if I meet with their staff, if Craig meets with their staff, if Shamy's there, Ronnie, and everybody's having. having their own separate conversations, nothing ever gets done, because nobody's ever held accountable to saying, hey, look, I mean, everybody out there says we need to be going in this direction. And that's frankly the same thing with the Board of Trustees, it seems like to me. None of them live here in Murfreesboro.
Or Rutherford County.
Or Rutherford County, none of them, you know, they, they seem to think they get things done with writing checks instead of dealing with issues, and, you know, like we had to deal with them every day that we're here, so, I don't know, I don't know the best thing, I, if they're not going to come, I'm still willing to talk about it. I was actually going to throw another topic in there in case we got too busy with MTSU and it's completely separate, but I'll text you out or we'll, or I'll email you about it.
We're on the 20th, we got the time.
Madeline, I hope, I hope, I want to just make sure, I hope y'all know from, you know, the response that I sent, I wanted to make sure and reiterate that we did want to partner together. Um, I mean, look, I don't think it's any secret, I mean, I think over the last 18 months, um, I mean, there, there have been several instances that we, I say we as a, I say them as a staff, and then being brought into some of these discussions, that we have very much disagreed with specifically the administration, because, you know, I think we have all tried to go in saying we want to partner together and, you know, saying that collectively together and then going by videos or things that were sent outside of that, it doesn't help when we're not working towards the same mission, saying one thing and then saying another thing to another group. So, I mean, I think that's why when we had the invitation to send to the Board of Trustees, originally when we had that first retreat in College Grove, I think y'all had asked me, actually, it was the second retreat that we had at Cedar Vine Manor, I think y'all had asked me to sit down with Chairman Smith and ask for a meeting with the Board of Trustees, and so I went and did that, actually had lunch with him in Franklin, and they were not interested, he was not interested in doing that. I mean, having the discussions in public, and at that point, that's when I'd said, well, we don't have an option as a council to have these discussions in public unless we, we, yeah, we can't do the, have these discussions in private, we have to have these discussions in public, and so then we sort of left that alone, and then I think that's where, a month ago, we had the meeting in the council chambers, that, that recommendation after I had sent from staff a, a, that draft letter to send to the board, I think everyone agreed that it was better to, and, so what I want to say is, I, I think staff is working, I see Chad's gotten up, I think they're working great together with, with their staff. I think the airport is probably better than it's ever been. I think their staff has agreed that they're not going to expand from their current operations. They, they definitely realize that the limits, I mean, it's unfortunate that an entire new staff had to come in to recognize the same thing that the city was saying 18 months ago, that ultimately we're at that point, but, um, I've shared that email with three or four people who are close to MTSU and, um, and still have not figured out why no one will want to come and, and meet, so I, I'll be happy to send Dr. McPhee an email or Craig and say, you know, based on our conversations today, the council is wondering if, if we could invite you to come to this, and, or maybe, maybe Dr. McPhee and Chairman Smith could both, could both come, or I don't mind sending it out to the entire Board of Trustees and say, look, if you individually want to come and take part as individuals, you're welcome to, to come and take part, so.
If the problem is how we're, who we're inviting, and it seemed to me that that was what they were trying to say, we can't, we, we delegate this authority to our president and the administration, and that, so that they have a different way of looking at things than basically how things get done in the city. So to me, the one thing of having him here, each of us have had conversations, I know probably everybody here has talked to, to MTSU, and if the issue is we want to have a collegial relationship with you that identifies issues of concern, and we want to make that statement, because I think that's what we were trying to say, is just here are the points that are tender parts, are opportunities within our community that, that directly affect each other, we want this on the table, and you understand and hear from us as a council. The simplest way to get that in the public record is for them to attend and, and let's have this dialogue, begin this dialogue publicly, because of the way we have to handle it. I, I'm just not so sure if we sent, because we all know what the issues are, you know, the security around, there's, uh, the MTSU, the traffic issues that are, we, we can identify those things. We need them to know and the public to know that these are the concerns that we have, and we want to work together for solutions. I just want to hear those kind of ideas as coming from them, saying, we're willing to work forward, and then the public be able to see that as a public statement, because, I mean, each of us have probably heard this when we pick up the phone and call somebody, but I'd like to see it on a public fashion, that we, we all have said, we're going to work together, we're not going to be adversaries, we're going to be partners. Uh, that, that kind of thing needs to be said in a public setting, I think, and so if, if the only way that you, they feel comfortable making that happen is for Dr. McPhee to represent the university before us, if that's the way we can do it, I, I don't have a problem with it. I think inviting him to come and, and have this dialogue with, with the president of the university, if that's what can happen, because I remember a time where he invited us as individuals to come over and meet with their administrative staff. You remember in his office, and we, and we all came at different times? So it's basically the same kind of thing, we're just saying we want to be able to initiate it and, and to have it on the public record that we aren't going to be adversarial in our relationship, and we're not trying to tear each other down, we're trying to build each other up, but something like that, I think, that kind of statement, uh, I think would make this meeting on, on the 20th a productive meeting.
Well, one thing we do know, that there is a problem, I mean, it's a big problem, and, uh, here again, if we don't come together, that problem will be solved. I don't have a problem with us meeting again, you know, and discussing the problem, but that, this, that'll be, this meeting will be the third time I've heard the same rhetoric. So we can have it for the third time, I mean, because we just going to repeat ourselves. Hey, I'm okay with it.
Well, I, look, I don't want to have to repeat, you know, everything that we've talked about either, and that's part of the reason why I think we were trying to get the meeting put together, right, is we already said it, and those were public meetings that we were at. We tried to put a letter together, staff did, based on what they had heard, kind of coming from those meetings, and, you know, that's sort of tough, because it's just hard to get, you know, a letter formatted to say exactly what everybody would want to say in the way that they would want to say it, right? I mean, we all know there's different ways you can say things, right? And so that's tough. I don't know the right answer, all I know is that those things exist, they existed four, five, six years ago when we started talking about them, and that's the exact roadblock I'm talking about wishing we avoided, and the whole putting your head in the sand, I don't want us to be the one putting our head in the sand, we can't control what they do, but these, yes, we have been talking about these things, and our meetings and the meetings that they invited us to, hey, here are things that exist, you know? You break the law on this side of the street, it's this penalty, you get kicked out of school. If you're across the street in an apartment and you break that same law, nobody ever even knows about it, right? For students, I mean, those kind, is there anything we can work on? Is there something we can put together? And it just goes into a black hole, and literally nothing, I've seen zero changes, zero in the last four or five years, since I know I've had personal discussions and we've had group discussions, and, so, I mean, it's like, where do we go from here? And if the Board of Trustees is not willing to listen, you know, maybe that just is what it is, but if that's the case, then the relationship will not be good.
Right.
And it can't be good if we're going in opposite directions. If they think it's okay, triple the size, you know, just looking right here at the airport, it's an easy target, triple it twice in six years, and run six or eight laps around here every time they come up at 700 feet, I mean, you know, this is common sense, that's probably going to have a negative impact on the community, it's just common sense, it's not, you know, it's not me versus MTSU or us versus MTSU, it's just, why don't you think about somebody else other than, you know, only how it impacts you, not the community? I think...
The one thing that we, we all agree on, we, we have a lot of common interests. The university and the city, I mean, we, we can't separate them, we, we are intertwined, our economy, our, uh, the culture, the whole community is, is joined at the hip, and you can't cut your nose off to spite your face. So the issue is, to me, we've got to keep, it's always our move, it's our move to move forward, to try to move this, the ball forward. Don't get frustrated because it hasn't worked in the past, don't get frustrated because the trustees have said, no, we don't want to meet, don't get frustrated about it, just keep trying, because the issue is perseverance will yield opportunity.
I'm in for the meeting, by the way.
And, and so let's keep trying, let's, let's keep shifting, let's keep moving, let's keep trying, other tack to addressing the problem, uh, and, and not give up on the process, because, you know, I believe what, over the long period of time, that consistency and that persistence in this is going to say, there'll be some way to resolve this, because we, we've got too much to lose, and we've just got to keep trying to make it work out, and not just say, throw up our hands and say, I've been frustrated, we've tried that 100 times, and it's never worked, and nobody's never listened, and it's, nothing's ever happened, just keep plowing the field. Keep, keep doing what we have to do and try, trying to find a new tack and a new way to address the problem, and that persistence will yield opportunity, it really will.
Yes.
I believe that, it always has in 70 years of my life.
And it's, I mean, it's a good week, you know, Dean Hayes passed away this past week, and the Dean Hayes track would have not gotten built...
If it hadn't been for the city.
Hadn't been for the city and the, and the issue, you know, partnering together. The part where I think what Rick's relaying to, and, look, I think every single person that's sitting up here on the council graduated from MTSU, I mean, I think every one of us are invested in, I mean, you've got seven MTSU graduates up here, but I think what Rick's saying, and I, I, I tend to agree, that, you know, a partnership, you have to have two people who are willing to partner, and it can't always just be, hey, the city's helping here, the city's helping there, and whenever we have, hey, we want to work on these issues, to not get that help. So, you know, you look at Middle Tennessee Boulevard that happened, that took 14 years to do, we're now talking about the Blue Build campaign, where, you know, there's discussion about how the city can partner with that, you know, at the same time, Darren is looking at that area where we know once you cross East Main Street, we've got a significant sewer capacity issue all in that area, so we need to, as a city, determine if MTSU's growing in certain areas, how can we help with that, knowing that we have that capacity issue? So there's some significant issues that, you know, that need to be addressed, and, I, I mean, maybe it's just the council continuing to push those, those ideas and say, hey, here's what we'd like to see, and, and then hopefully if the university can help, then, I just, and I hate to say this, but, you know, I just got on my Facebook feed that there's a partnership between Chick-fil-A and MTSU that they just announced today to help, you know, fast food workers get scholarships to work, and I just, that's a great initiative for, for the city, but I just have got to think that if the city, if MTSU will partner with Chick-fil-A and have those types of discussions, that they would come and meet with the city when we're one of the largest employers in Rutherford County, and they are as well, so how do we improve everything? So, and I, I'll send the email to Dr. McPhee, as soon as we live here, asking, hey, we really want to ask you to come, and if the board can't come, maybe you can relay back to the, to the board, and I'll, you know, send that out to everyone. If y'all have got a better idea, I'm all in, I'm all ears, I stayed out of the airport stuff, but I thought the invitation that we sent was pretty benign on saying, can you come, please, please sit down with us and let's just talk about the community, so.
What we leaving out in the whole scenario, if I think, we just need to pray about it. I mean, do what you're going to do, but let's pray about it, because prayer changes things, you know? Just pray, we're going to pray about it, we're going to have our meetings, you're going to send a letter, and then we'll see where it goes.
Probably inappropriate to pay for the almighty smoker to smoke someone, right? All right, any other staff, any staff, any council?
Y'all, uh, I know we've got some weather coming in again, we mentioned the streets guys, and after it last week, can we send them over, y'all, like, some breakfast or something like that, have them some stuff at the, at their offices ready, get them ready to go, y'all, if that's a, like, okay idea, just make sure they got biscuits or whatever they need, if they're going to be getting there real early, I think we're going to have, look like another sleeping snow event.
Friday.
Friday, Saturday, Saturday night, Sunday, so I know Raymond's got people on hold to be on call for Saturday, probably, and Sunday this weekend, is that something correct? Everybody?
Yeah, on behalf of council, we'll get that through.
Make sure we have them some goodies there or something, make, make life a little bit easier on, coming in on weekends.
And it's a group, um, what is it, the Jeep group?
Stones River Jeep Association.
Yeah, I thought that was so nice what they did Thursday, Friday, I mean, that was very nice. They picked up, um, medical people and took them home, brought them to work, so they wouldn't have to, and that's something I, I thought was very nice.
All right, through the business, we'll stand adjourned.